Dr. Sanco, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. At this time, I would like to ask our friend Sage Ondike from Council Rock North to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So please stand for the pledge. Sage?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Remain standing, please, for the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous night For the red hearts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, o'st, as stars spangled banner yet win, for the land of the free and the home of the brave. The wind is cold, the branches bare, but hearts are warm and bright; for there is peace and hope to share This wondrous winter night in December. The wind is cold, the branches bare, the winds are strong, the branches bare; for there is peace and hope to share, for there is peace and hope to share in this wondrous winter night in December. We kindled the spark of kindness, we reached out in joyful song; and so we remember the light of December its shine on us all year long. The wind is cold, the branches bare, the winds are strong, the branches bare; for there is peace and hope to share, for there is peace and hope to share in this wondrous winter night in December. In December.
Ms. Benedict, Ms. Benedict, don't leave yet, please. Let's give an opportunity for our folks to recognize our Welsh singers led by Ms. Stephanie Benedict. You guys were awesome tonight. Thank you very much. One more round of applause.
All right. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Tate?
Present.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Here.
Mr. Roosevelt?
Here.
Mr. Hickey?
Here.
Ms. Polly?
Present.
Ms. Osaki?
Here.
Ms. Khan?
Here.
Ms. Stone?
Here.
Ms. Horner?
Here.
And next on the agenda, we have the Council Rock North Student Advisory Board, Mr. Truskovich.
Good evening, Board of School Directors, Dr. Sanco and Administration. Hope everybody had a healthy and safe, happy New Year and holiday season. Again, it's my great pleasure to be here tonight showcasing Council Rock High School North and the amazing things that are happening each and every day. So this time, I will turn it over to our 11th grade representative, Olivia Esposito.
Unfortunately, Lele could not be here. Good evening, Board. I'm sorry I could not be here tonight, but I am happy to say that I will be here for the next meeting. As far as the class of 2025 goes, senior prom is under meticulous planning for the event. Our class officers have been working hard task tasting different meal options, finding a good DJ, and a fitting theme to ensure that our class has an amazing night of one last time at a dance together. I am also pleased to be able to say that Disney is officially 96 days away. The class of 2025 is extremely excited to be able to experience such a fun place and vacation together as a class. Also, I am happy to say that the seniors took home the win at Powderpuff in November, a great comeback from our loss at Blue and White Night. Now, on to the clubs at North. Over these past two months, there have been multiple fundraisers held by clubs that go either raising money for the particular club or donating to a good cause. In speech and debate, Trinity Alumpali placed fifth at Princeton Invite, one of the top competitions in the country. Additionally, Joyce Chow won Villager at St. Joe's, and Daniel Lau was a co-champion at the Ridge debates. As we are in the frigid months of winter, the Ski and Snowboard Club has their trip to Blue Mountain this Friday. In our arts department, there have been multiple accomplishments. Isabel Steiner for winning second place at the drawing unti- for her drawing Untitled at the A O Y Emerging Artists of Lower Bucks County High School Arts Show, along with 22 other North artists who displayed their work at the Artists of Yardley Art Center. On a musical note, the State Thesbian Festival, we had multiple students at North awarded. Grace Siemens and Emerson Gottlieb awarded the PA Thesbian Scholarship, Grace in Management and Emerson in Performance. Lulita Escuega Soifeta was also selected to perform her 2023-2024 Thespi on the conference main stage last year, earning a highest rank of Superior at both states and internationals last year. In November, Sock and Baskin put on a show, Almost Maine, allotting many viewers from North and the community. This February, 12 Angry Jurors will be performed by Sock and Baskin on the 13th, 14th, and 15th. This is all I have for you tonight. Again, I'm sorry I couldn't make it, but I'm happy to see everyone at the I'm happy to that I will be seeing everyone at the next meeting. Thank you. Now, on to mine. Good evening, Board. I am Olivia Esposito, the Student Advisory Board Representative for the Class of 2026, and I'm so happy to be talking with you all in this new year. I will be discussing tonight the current events within the junior class at North, as well as the school-wide athletics. Class officers are in the midst of planning our junior prom. They are currently picking a theme, and the whole class is excitedly awaiting its release. Class of 2026 also ran an MLK food drive in which donations will be given to the Wrightstown Food Pantry. Now for our updates regarding athletics. Recently, North proudly recognized the students committed to play Division One and Division Two sports in college. As for new athletics, this was the first year of girls wrestling team, which is a joint team for North and South. Also, Girls' Flag Football is starting this year as a club, and it will be a PIA official spring sport next year. Boys Cross Country came in an impressive third place at States. Boys Basketball is currently ranked 35, and Girls Basketball is ranked 37, and both will be continuing their main season through February. Winter Cheer had both JV and their varsity teams place first at their Panther Showdown competition in Quakertown, and are excited to be heading to States on January 30th and 31st. Ed and Semen was a finalist for North Wrestling at the Beast of the East Tournament, and also came in third at the Powerade Tournament over winter break, both of which are some of the most competitive wrestling tournaments in the country. Another will be taking place this weekend at Council Rock South. Finally, spring sports will be commencing in the first week of March. Thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to our next meeting in March.
Hello, School Board. My name is Liliel Buker, and I am the Student Advisory Board Representative for the Class of 2027. I'm thrilled to be here today to share with you what the Student Executive Board and sophomore class have accomplished thus far as we reach the midway point of the school year. The Student Executive Board has done a superb job of providing the student body at North with a vast array of activities to attend, as well as ways to become involved within the school's community. Back in November, SEB organized the 18th Annual Powderpuff Football Game, in which the seniors were able to score victory over the juniors. All proceeds from this event raised through raffle baskets and additional donations were put toward the Lauren Talbot Memorial Fund, which contributes to a scholarship for Council Rock North and South students. To kick off the holiday season, the entirety of the student government participated in the Holiday Project, which the Student Executive Board organizes each year. Each member of the student government bought and wrapped gifts for students at a preschool in Bristol. The gifts were distributed during a party complete with food and games on December 11th. Next, the second pep rally of this year is set to occur on January 28th. Here, students and teachers will be able to participate in exciting games, and winter sports teams, as well as seniors in the music department, will be recognized. Currently, SEB is working on the talent show, which will occur on February 26th. Host auditions took place on January 8th, and the acts auditions on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. Many talented groups and individuals will be sharing their skills on the night of the show. In addition to the Student Executive Board, the Class of 2027 is also working to organize an exciting event. The grade student government members are tediously brainstorming for the winter semi-formal on February 21st. The theme is set as Winter Wonderland, and the officers are compiling ideas for fundraising. They also participated in the highway cleanup on November 15th and the Holiday Project. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, School Board. I am Mia Burstein, and I am here to inform you of recent academics at Council Rock North, as well as represent the Class of 2028. I would like to start off by saying that the freshmen at North have adapted to the high school routine excellently. Additionally, lots of freshmen have started new clubs and participated in fall and winter sports, getting involved in many of the events and opportunities that are available at the high school level. Regarding academics at Council Rock North, two STEM Research classes took a trip to Drexel University to deepen their studies of nanotechnology and material science by taking tours of some of the labs. The students got to learn about some about the most recent advances in nanotechnology. At the end of November, the Honors Study of English IX students at North published their first edition of Ghost Nine, their digital magazine. The magazine focused on Ray Bradbury's The Illustrated Man and the concepts of storytelling technology in the future. All grades had the Cyber Bowling Assembly, which outlined various important things, such as the consequences of not thinking through one's actions before sending or posting something online. The students also learned about the seriousness of cyber safety. North was recognized on the AP School Honor Roll for the amazing results that the Advanced Placement Courses offered. Additionally, students are preparing for the midterm exams, which will be taken on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday next week. Another major event that is occurring right now is the beginning of course selection for the 2025-2026 school year. Program Planning Night was last Wednesday, the 8th. Many parents attended to gain more knowledge about the multitude of courses available. Teachers have already begun to meet with students and set class recommendations for the upcoming year. The Electives Assembly was held on January 9th, during which 9th, 10th, and 11th graders were able to get an inside view into all of the elective options. The students' meetings with their assigned guidance counselors to finalize their courses will start in February. Lastly, three amazing students and three teachers from Council Rock North were contestants in a trivia game on Fox News last night. We are proud to say that the students bested the teachers, and the cash prize will be donated to Able Force. Thank you for your time tonight, and I look forward to the next meeting.
Hello. My name is Polina Nikolinka. I apologize for being a little bit late. I got into a small car crash. Um, all good. I'm a senior at Council Rock North High School. I'm also a Level 300 student in the Medical and Health Professions Program at Mailbox Institute of Technology. First up tonight, we're thrilled to announce that MBIT has been recognized as the best in the region, earning top honors in four areas in the Bucks County's Harold's Best of the Region Awards. We are thankful for the incredible support and votes. We proudly won Best Trade School, Best Adult Learning Center, Best Cosmetology School, Daycare Center, Little Bucks Partners in Learning. These awards celebrate MBIT's commitment to excellence and our dedication to empowering students and adult learners alike. Next, January School Board Appreciation Month. We're deeply thankful for your dedication and leadership. Your unwavering support plays a vital role in the success of our students and programs. Thank you for your commitment to education and for shaping a brighter future fund for the MBIT community. Next month marks the start of Career and Technical Education Month, a time to raise public awareness and celebrate the impact and achievements of CTE programs nationwide. MBIT is excited to launch the Support the Trades Initiative again by inviting the community to show their support by purchasing and wearing specialty specially-designed T-shirts. The community is encouraged to share their support on social media, tagging MBIT to spread the word. Proceeds from this fundraiser will help support our students attending Skills USA Nationals. Congratulations to our Medical and Health Professions teachers, teacher Sherry Appleton, who was named one of the 12 finalists for the 2025 Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year Award. This prestigious recognition underscores her unwavering dedication, exceptional passion, and remarkable contributions to education. Ms. Appleton's commitment to preparing the next generation of healthcare professionals through innovative teaching strategies and steadfast steadfast support for her students is a source of immense pride for our own community. Next, MBIT is proud to announce the competition of its state-of-the-art welding lab, a transformative space designed to enhance hands-on learning and equip students with industry-standard skills. This innovative facility is a testament to our commitment to preparing students for high-demand careers in welding and manufacturing. To celebrate this significant milestone, we will host a ribbon cutting ceremony on Wednesday, February 12th. The event will bring together state representatives, local officials, and key stakeholders, including community and industry partners who played an integral integral role in supporting this project. Guests will have the opportunity to tour our new lab, witness lab demonstrations by our talented welding students, and learn more about advanced technology and equipment now available to enhance their education. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to keep you informed about what is happening at Mailbox Institute of Technology.
Thank you for having us. And again, as you see, Polina had a rough ride. Luli's family had a flat tire. Mia picked her up. So again, testament to their fortitude making it here and presenting.
Glad you made it.
Is everybody okay? Everyone's okay?
Very, very nicely done.
That's dedication, Mr. Tate, huh? Thank you. I'm glad everyone's safe and sound. Thanks, Mr. Tate.
Very nicely done.
And next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sanco, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Welcome and good evening to the Board of School Directors, to the staff and community members joining us tonight, and those tuning in on the Council Rock YouTube channel. I'd like to once again thank the Maureen M. Welch Elementary Welsh Singers, led by Ms. Stephanie Benedict, for starting our meeting tonight with their musical talent. Finally, I'd like to thank Council Rock North Principal, Mr. Jason Truskovich, and Council Rock North Student Advisory Board for their report tonight. As many of you know, January marks School Board Appreciation Month, and I'd like to open tonight's meeting by expressing genuine gratitude to our dedicated board members. Before tonight's meeting, the board was celebrated by students with a reception and mementos from students across the district. Serving on the school board is a voluntary role, and here in Council Rock, we're very fortunate to have nine individuals who are deeply committed to ensuring excellence in every aspect of Council Rock education. To our board members, thank you for your unwavering dedication and all that you do to uphold our mission of keeping students first always. Thank you very much for your service. 2025 has gotten off to a strong start, with many new beginnings for Council Rock. Over winter break, Richborough Elementary School successfully moved into its updated facility and was ready for the return of all the students on January 2nd, 2025. Last night, Richborough Elementary celebrated with a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and I would like to thank the hundreds from across the Richborough community who braved the cold temperatures to come out to celebrate. Thanks also to the board members who were able to make it, and a special thank you to the former students, principals, teachers, and staff who returned to tour the newly renovated building. I'd also like to thank the current and previous board members for their vision and guidance throughout this project's completion. The building is extremely beautiful. Based on the excitement and interest we witnessed last night, Richborough Elementary is off to a great start as a place for Council Rock students to grow and learn for many years to come. I'd also like to commend the teachers, staff, our facilities, crew, administrators, all who worked over winter break to set up classrooms and offices. Their efforts to ensure Richborough was warm, equipped, and welcoming for our children on January 2nd made a huge difference, and we're grateful for their dedication to our students. For those keeping track, I know some of the student board was mentioning days. Today marked the 82nd day of our school year. Although it might seem hard to believe, the second marking period closes in just 12 days, on January 28th. This is a reminder to the parents that report cards will be available to view on the Home Access Center on February 12th. Secondary school report cards will be accessible at 3:00 PM, and elementary report cards will be accessible at 4:00 PM. One of our privileges as a district is celebrating our students who distinguish themselves with their academic achievements. The National Merit Scholar Program recognizes academically talented students across the nation through various scholarship programs. Students who earn National Merit Scholar stand out for their exemplary exemplary academic performance, and Council Rock is proud to have them here tonight so we can recognize their hard work and commitment to learning. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Tate to join Mr. Truskovich and me at the podium, where we will acknowledge the Council Rock High School North National Merit Scholars for the 24-25 school year. Mr. Tate?
It is with great pleasure to present to you our National Merit Scholars this evening. Each year, approximately 1.5 million students enter the National Merit Scholarship Program and nationwide competition for recognition and award conducted by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation through taking the PSAT qualifying test. The students being recognized this evening have been identified as a member of the highest 50,000 scorers. Those being named Committed Students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success, represent a valuable national resource, and play a key role in the school's academic development. I present to you Council Rock High School North's Committed Students in alphabetical order. Seeya, April. Jack Kai, who is unable to attend this evening. Austin Choi, who is also unable to attend this evening. Anaga Kenerpadi. Steven Liu. Mary Ann Moise, who is also unable to attend this evening. Sage Ondike. And our Pledge of Allegiance. Anika Shaw. Lena Zito. The last two are unable to attend. It's Simberly Sai and Neobias. And I'll go pass the microphone off to the 12th grade principal, Mr. Benziell, who will present the semifinalist.
Good evening, everyone. The following students have been recognized as National Merit semifinalists. The scores of these individuals fall in the top 16,000 of all test takers and represent the top 1% of students who took the exam. Trinity Alumpali, unable to attend. Bianca Becker, also unable to attend. John Daniel. Jonathan Grundy McLachlan. The next four students were unable to attend. Andrew Jin. Neil Falchuk. Felix Peng. And Alexander Smith. Nathan Spirit. Alex Tao. Joanna Wu, unable to attend. And last but not least, Esther Zhang. Thank you. Thank you.
Would you mind joining us for a photo?
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you all, and congratulations to the National Merit Scholars from Council Rock High School North. If I may continue, Mr. Tate. On Wednesday, December 4th, a critical medical emergency occurred at Council Rock High School South. Thanks to the swift and skilled actions of the Council Rock South Cardiac Emergency Response Team and two students who jumped in to help, the individual was successfully resuscitated and transported to the hospital for further care. It was an alarming situation, a serious situation, but the positive outcome is a testament to the team's quick thinking, preparedness, and dedication. The individual who was helped along with their family has expressed profound gratitude for the team's actions, and on behalf of the Council Rock community, I extend our heartfelt thanks. Each of you, those of you sitting with us tonight here, you displayed extraordinary care and commitment, and together you exemplified the true meaning of teamwork and compassion. Likewise, we thank the first responders who arrived to the scene and for their continued good service. At this time, I would like to once again invite Mr. Tate and Council Rock High School South Principal, Mr. Raddick, to join me at the podium as we recognize the members of the Council Rock South Cardiac Emergency Response Team and the Council Rock South students whose life-saving assistance impacted our community deeply. Mr. Raddick, Mr. Tate?
Thank you. In recognizing one of the two students, Miles Daniels. Miles was quick to grab, along with the other student, the AED equipment and take it to their room so that our emergency team would be well-prepared. Okay, another student who is not here tonight, Vince Valley. Worth Hampton Township Police Officer, John Lobb. Not here tonight. Council Rock South Security, Vicki Smith. Council Rock South Security, Ed Costello, who is also not here tonight. Admin Assistant in the Nursing Office, Dawn Neary, who is not here tonight. Admin Assistant in the Main Office, Lisa Horsh, who is not here tonight. Our Teacher Firsthand, who is able to make all of the necessary contacts in her classroom, is Trish Verdi. Member of our Emergency Response Team, PE Teacher, Kim Mahoney. Member of our Emergency Response Team, PE Teacher, Trey Velasco. Member of our Emergency Response Team, Special Ed Teacher, Zach Schramm. Do not believe Zach is here tonight. English Teacher, Savan Simon-Pur, who is not here tonight. Nurse, Michelle Adamas. Nurse, Colleen Disrochus.
The recent emergency at Council Rock South underscores the critical importance of emergency response practice and preparedness in saving lives. This year, with generous funding from the Council Rock Education Foundation, the Stop the Bleed Chain program has been launched in our middle schools. Through this program, all Council Rock 8th grade students will be certified in life-saving techniques to stop bleeding in severely injured individuals. This initiative will ensure that every student at North and every student at South is equipped with the skills and knowledge to respond effectively to bleeding emergencies, whether at home, in the community, or at school, over the next four years. Thank you to CREF's support. Council Rock students are gaining the confidence and capability to make a difference where it matters most. Earlier this month, the Artist of Yardley Art Center announced the winners of the Emerging Artist of Lower Bucks High Schools, an exhibition showcasing the talents of students from across the area. Recent, from across the area, recently, we learned that we have three student winners and nearly 40 students displaying work in the Artist of Yardley Art Show this year. This year's Council Rock winners include Chloe Lefkowitz, Council Rock South for winning first place for her charcoal drawing, Inheritance; Isabel Steiner, Council Rock High School North for winning second place for her drawing, Untitled; Elizabeth Kutieva, Council Rock South for winning honorable mention for her painting, Checkmate Anxiety. We would like to congratulate the winners and other featured artists and encourage them to continue to pursue their passion for creativity and artistic expression. The next time you visit the nearby Giant Grocery Store, please consider rounding up at the register. From January 1st through March 31st, 2025, you can round up at the register at Giant and donate to the Feeding School Kids Program. This program supports children in our district who need help accessing nutritious meals and snacks. We thank the community for rounding up at the register and appreciate the opportunity to partner again with Giant to support the Feeding School Kids Program. This past January 6th, Council Rock, along with all Bucks County schools, declared a snow day due to inclement weather. While we hope the remainder of the winter is mild, we will likely once again need to address an inclement weather day. So that parents and students can be prepared, please note that the next weather-related school closing day this year will be a flexible instructional day. This means that asynchronous learning will occur, and student attendance will be recorded through the login process on either Canvas or Google Classroom, depending upon your child's grade level. You can find more information on flexible instructional days on our website on the opening page under the Emergency and Weather Notification tab. This is a reminder that all Council Rock schools will be closed on Monday, January 20th for the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. This year, our annual Council Rock Cares Day activities will take place at Holland Middle School. They will begin at 9:00 AM when the winners of our Martin Luther King Day of Service Essay Contest will read their submissions. Then the group will assemble care packages to donate to local charities. Also important, next Tuesday through Thursday, January 21st to 25th, is Council Rock Education Week, the time we set aside for parents and guardians to see firsthand the teaching and learning in our classrooms. Parents who plan to visit their child's school should register in advance, and registration information will be shared by the school principal or your child's teacher. Visitation times will vary. On Tuesday, January 22nd and Thursday, January 24th, visitation hours are from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. On Wednesday, January 23rd and Friday, January 25th, visitation hours are 9:30 until 11:30 AM. Again, please check with your child's teacher or the principal's weekly newsletter for more information. Other important dates, I will mention again, Monday, January 2nd, schools are closed, offices are open. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we will celebrate Council Rock Education Week, and note on Thursday, January 23rd, we will have an Education Committee meeting at the Chancellor Center at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, January 28th, is an early dismissal for grades K to 8, PM kindergarten tens, and it will be a Teacher Professional Development Day. Thursday, February 6th, there is a Facilities Committee meeting. It will be held here at Chancellor. Please note the revised start time is 5:00 PM. Once again, that's Thursday, February 6th, we have a Facilities meeting, the revised start time is 5:00 PM. Thursday, February 13th, is a Finance Committee meeting here at Chancellor, 7:00 PM. Friday, February 14th, all schools are closed, offices are open, and that will be a Teacher Professional Development Day. Monday, February 17th, President's Day Holiday, all schools and offices are closed. Thursday, February 20th, there will be a Board of School Directors meeting right in this room at 7:00 PM. And Thursday, February 27th, there is an Education Committee meeting, 7:00 PM at the Chancellor Center. Finally, this is a reminder that for reliable, accurate, and up-to-date information about our district, please refer to resources, websites, and social media platforms managed by the Council Rock School District. We advise our community to be cautious about relying on the accuracy of social media posts that frequently contain inaccurate or misleading information regarding Council Rock. If you question what you see, need additional details, or need a reliable fact check, please contact the district directly. Our contact information is readily available on our website at www.crsd.org. This concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Senko. It was great to get all that information. I appreciate it. And next on the agenda is the Solicitor's Report. Mr. Musso?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to let the public know that tonight's executive session we had before was about a personnel matter and labor relations, and then the board also met an executive session last week, also to talk about labor relations. And you all have our January Solicitor's Report, and I have nothing further to report during the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Musso. Next on the agenda is Public Comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. When speaking to the board, we ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience or watching this broadcast live on CRTV and YouTube. Your ideas are welcome and will be considered in deliberating an issue. The board typically does not respond to comments or questions in real time. We have two folks signed up, and others are welcome. This first public comment segment is limited to agenda items. The first person signed up is Laura Lorenzano. I hope I pronounced it correctly, and if you'd give us, please, your town of residence. And come to the table, please. Welcome.
There we go. This is better. Board members, I want to, you know, thank you for letting me be here to talk to you, and I want to support the continued exploration and implementation of block scheduling within our district. I believe you spoke about that last month, and I'd like to try to keep that on the agenda if possible. Block scheduling with extended class periods offers a multitude of benefits that significantly enhance the learning experience for our students. Really, it provides a deeper learning, a longer class period allows for in-depth exploration of complex topics. Teachers can engage students in more meaningful discussions, facilitate collaborative projects, and delve deeper into critical thinking and problem-solving. It reduces student stress. They have a little bit more time. They're not running through their classes so quickly. It improves, you know, the teacher-student relationship. They're getting a little bit more one-on-one time with their teacher, individualized attention, a little bit of a personalized learning experience. The, you know, the enhanced creativity and innovation that comes out of it. In our 21st century, those skills of collaboration, communication, and critical thinking come into play. You know, while I definitely acknowledge that changing any schedule is going to have some major challenges, you know, I think we should really push forward on it, and I do understand that back in, I want to say, 2018, 19, when I found out that this was on the schedule in December, I did a little bit of research, and I do see that in 1819, a lot of work was done, probably by some members here and others. I was not here in the district at that time, so I think a lot can be learned from that data, and you're not starting from scratch on this, and it's certainly worth moving forward personally. And I think there are some members, actually, some of the kids that were right here in front of you, receiving awards in the music department. My kids, I have an 8th grader getting ready to go through program planning, I have a 9th grader between the two of them, they're in band orchestra, the marching band, color guard, indoor color guard, jazz band, chamber orchestra, and many other things, basketball, you name it. For kids like that, having the block scheduling, that movement between six class periods to eight is compelling because it allows my daughter, who really wants to take music theory, to have that opportunity without having to drop a period and go take it at the community college in order to add that into her schedule. I'd like her total learning experience to be with Council Rock, not some other source, not yet as a sophomore. So I hope you're able to consider this. Please research, go through the data, and, you know, I'd like to see it move forward if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. And the second person signed up is Craig Myers. And your residents, please.
Newtown Township. I'm actually also here to speak about the high school schedule. I'm also the Council Rock North Band Parent President, so I'm kind of here in an unofficial representative for them with Ms. representative for them with Ms. Lorenzano as well. You know, I'm not necessarily pushing block scheduling. I think the just schedule needs to be looked at and revised in some way, and I know it's a very large undertaking that involves, you know, labor contracts and all kinds of things. But it's definitely worth looking into, and I'll give kind of just my personal experience as an example. So my son, who's in 10th grade and in the marching band, obviously, you know, his path is his computer science for his academics. And in order to meet all his academic requirements, he kind of has to, every year, almost choose, can I do band or do I do the computer science program? So he has yet to do the computer science program at the high school. He's been doing it on his own. He's going to be taking the course at the community college. He's been taking PE at the community college, just so he has an additional elective at the high school. And, you know, and then I wouldn't bring it to the board if it's just my personal experience, but as the president of the association, it's come up in the meeting that that's happened to all of the students. And it just made, not all, but a lot of them, and it just made me wonder how many students are unable, you know, I look at the program guide of all the fantastic electives that Council Rock offers, all the STEM, the Family Consumer Science, and all of these things. And I wonder how many students are limited in what they can do just because of the schedule, you know, with all the great, these great course offerings. You know, and again, my example of my son, who's planning on attending very competitive computer science programs for college, is what he wants to do. And in order, I was talking to his guidance counselor, it's almost impossible for him to meet the requirements that the colleges want, you know, like the four years of math and science and English and, you know, participation in things like music and art and things like that. But again, for me, it's just, you know, I know we're not responsible for just, you know, my two children. You're responsible for thousands of kids. But I think it, for me, it becomes a question of how many students are really limited in their choices in terms of the great electives that they offer just because the schedule doesn't work, you know, to have the language and this elective and that elective. So whether it's block scheduling or, you know, a different way, I think it's worth the time and research to really look into, is this occurring as often as I think it might be with students missing certain opportunities that Council Rock offers? So I hope the Education Committee addresses, you know, and looks into that for the future. So, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else who has public comment about agenda items? There's a second public comment after...
I have a question. It's brought up in other meetings, or do you wait to the end of the meeting?
If it's a non-agenda item, then it comes in the public comment segment at the end of the meeting, if that's all right? Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, if there's no one else, we'll move on. Thank you. Ms. Polly, can I ask you to make a motion for the approval of minutes of the December 5 meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of the meeting of the School Board Directors held on December 5, 2024.
Second.
Any objections, questions, comments? Mr. Roosevelt?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, thank you very much to the Board Secretary for clearly marking the YouTube section and including the webpage for it. It makes it very easy to understand and follow and find the entire meeting's recording if one would like. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Roosevelt. No other comments? If you would record that, please, it's passing unanimously. Next on the agenda is Education Committee. Who will be presenting the report? Ms. Khan, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Good evening. The Education Committee met last month on Monday, December 2nd. Historically, the Education Committee has not met in the month of December, but thanks to administration, they felt it was needed due to all the ongoing work and initiatives that are planned to give our students in Council Rock the best education possible. So I personally thank the administration for adding that additional meeting. Appreciate it. The results of the Student Wellness Survey were presented by Dr. Casey Black. The survey was open to all Council Rock families who have students in the district from grades K to 22, as well as staff. It was open for two weeks, covering three full weekends in November. There were 2,283 responses. Thank you to all those families and staff members who participated. Their input is valuable. Dr. Black noted a surprise in the results with a similar response, regardless of grade or respondent type. The survey asked five questions and an open-ended. The two highest-rated topics were reducing emotional distress and improving social behavior. And this, again, was the trend that Dr. Black saw, regardless of the students and the families or the staff answered that question, if they were in kindergarten or in high school, or in some cases, the students at 21, 22, 18 to 22. Dr. Black and her team will review programs that focus on these topics, considering the cost and logistics. I look forward to her program recommendations in a spring Education Committee meeting. Full-day kindergarten committee continues to work very hard on the framework and scheduling, now into scheduling a framework for lunches, recess, specials, and curriculum. Currently, our half-day kindergarten, they only get two out of the five specials that exist to the remaining grades. They only receive about two and a half hours of class time as well. With full-day kindergarten, the instructional day will increase to six and a half hours. The administration is looking to neighboring districts for guidance and experience to implement a more robust kindergarten readiness screening process. This will allow principals and teachers to better place students in classes based upon their individual strengths and needs. The administration and team continue to work on curriculum planning. Teachers will now be able to expand their teaching and learning, allowing time to deliver and cover the full curriculum, not only in math and English language arts, to its fidelity. In addition, students will get social studies and science through the purposeful play model, which I know that our kindergarten teachers are very excited about in developing and preparing and piloting currently. The administration looks to the spring to focus on professional development and training so that all of our kindergarteners, teachers from both within the district and outside the district are ready to begin in the fall. The English Language Development, or the ELD program, has grown significantly over the past few years, and a program review was completed this past year with interviews, observations, identifying the strengths and needs in the current program. The district has partnered with the Bucks County Intermediate Union Unit, sorry, to support the growing needs of our student population. The program looks to continue and improve a community partnership, working with families, the creation of a task force, adding additional trainings for staff, working with the Bucks County Intermediate Union, and additionally with Sage volunteers to better serve the needs of all of our students. In addition, both high schools will have a course change and/or addition in the upcoming year, the addition of modern band as a course addition for students looking to develop skills in modern instruments and digital music production. The purpose is to bridge the gap between music genres and hopefully connecting students to career opportunities and real-world applications to those who wish to continue to foster their love of music. The second course is an Accelerated American Civilization IX Social Studies Class to provide a smoother transition from middle school to high school. The work began in the spring of 2023 with brainstorming discussion and surveying of teachers. The class will also assist students for placement in 10th-grade advanced courses, including AP US History and Gifted Social Studies, specifically in helping them to develop their reading and writing skills. Ms. Tammy Gary did a fantastic job explaining in full detail at our meeting on December 2nd, if you wish to listen to her much better explanation of the course. That's at about the one-hour mark. This addition will also better align with the current high school curriculum model, offering four paths along with the other studies. This includes the Studies in American History, American Civilization, Accelerated American Civilization, and Honors American Civilization. I'd also like to add that these course offerings do not cost any additional funding or staff changes. I think it's exceptional to be able to add these benefits for our students without either of those changes, and we have the administration and the teachers to thank for that. So thank you. The idea of a high school schedule change is being revisited, both in the possibility of a later start time and/or schedule changes. This topic was last explored in 2018, 2019, which also included a stakeholder committee. The thought process was and still is the same, which is to increase opportunities for student choice in classes, possibly reducing student stress and allowing time for enrichment or intervention in the school day. I'd also like to note in some of the public comment, you know, they were also to speak about it, so a lot more flexibility for students. I want to reiterate that this was an initial review to the work which was done in 2018, 19, that was presented at the last Education Committee meeting. There is an interest to explore this again. The high school schedule for Council Rock has not changed in over 40 years. Things change, times change. It doesn't necessarily mean we're jumping to any decision. This will be a process much like full-day kindergarten, with intentional and purposeful exploration to see the options and what is ultimately in the best interest of our students. I know Dr. Senko has mentioned our new Special Education Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, Amanda Serene. She began in early December and continues to get to know the district and our program. I believe she will be joining our next Special Education Planning meeting, which is later on this month. This is a brand-new role, and I know families are looking forward to this additional support. The search for a new Special Services Director continues. I know the first and maybe second round of interviews have been completed, as the administration continues to narrow down the final candidates and have final interviews. I look forward to meeting our new Special Education Director, I'm sure, along with the rest of my board colleagues. I'd also like to state that, as Dr. Senko had stated, congratulations to the Richborough Elementary School and the community. I was able to attend with several of the board colleagues, ribbon cutting in the freezing cold last night. I was amazed at the amount of families and turnout that it came. I was literally parked in a neighborhood down the block, I'm not even sure. And thank you to the local Northampton police that were able to guide traffic and provide a safe walkway. Also this evening, as Dr. Senko had also mentioned, the Holland Middle School Student Council, along with their teacher, Ms. Alyssa LeBolt, provided a reception for us, a light dinner before our meeting in celebration of School Board Month. So I appreciate them coming out and setting that up. It's always a delight to sit down and chat with the middle schoolers. I'd also like to note that, you know, one of the asks that we had in Education Committee and along with board members, that this year, the Heart Safe Schools Training and Collaboration with CHOP was an ask for administration, and, you know, it's a lot to ask, and we can sit here as board colleagues and members and myself, ask for things, and it's a lot. And I know, after a lot of asking, they were willing and knew the importance of it. They were able to collaborate with CHOP, and I know they've been busy at work, Dr. Senko and his team administering that, making sure all of our AEDs are up to date, following all the protocols that CHOP had to offer, along with trainings. And I'd especially like to thank not only all the principals at our schools, the staff, the teachers, they've had to go through trainings and also create that cardiac response team, which, as we saw and heard from tonight, I think, you know, when we discussed that at an Education Committee meeting, we said if it was even one person it impacted. So I know the trainings continue, and it's going not only, you know, every single high school, middle school, and all the elementary schools, and I believe, I think by the end of the school year, if not sooner, Dr. Senko had mentioned. And also, along with that, Stop the Bleed with the CREF grant, I was able to visit Mr. Cunningham's class at Newtown Middle School a few weeks back. I can't quite remember the day, and I believe Ms. Sasecki had joined me. And again, that was incredible work to see these middle school students, not only are they learning CPR, and then they're learning these life-saving skills, emergency skills, that they will carry on with them for the rest of their lives. So I appreciate that. Thank you. This concludes my report. The next Education Committee meeting is actually next Thursday, January 23rd, here at the Chancellor Center at 7:00. So please come in person or tune in. I have, before I move on to the consent agenda items here, I'm sure there may be a couple of questions, so I'm just going to ask Dr. Senko or whoever it is that seems appropriate for items B, C, and D. Those aren't familial settlement agreements. If there's anything Dr. Senko wanted to add before I ask for the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. So, Letter B, Office of Inspector General Compliance. Every school district receives access funding, and this is a really background-checked. So it's mandated that we participate in this, and all of the folks that work in Council Rock who interact with the funds from access, they get, basically like if we were going to do a background check on somebody, they get checked every year. So it's everybody from the Director of Special Services to a teacher assistant working with children who qualify for access funds. So that's what that is. It's mandated, and it's a safety net that's put on us by the state. The Letter C, Brett DeNovian Associates, that is for assistance for a student, and we will be working with DeNovian Associates for a specialized BCBA for a particular student in one of our schools. And then Letter C, I'm sorry, Letter D, is a pool council for special education. So as the board knows, we asked a while ago for permission to partner with the IU and other Bucks County school districts for a pool council for technology. We're asking the same thing as it relates to special education. So what that does is it entitles the district or allows the district to receive thorough monthly updates on special ed law cases from across the Commonwealth. So in that capacity, the Director of Special Services, we've had this in the district before, the previous Director of Special Services had asked for this. There's value in it in terms of sharing and gaining information, and it will be under the lock and key of the Director of Special Services. So it really is an opportunity to learn with and from other special education experts and attorneys from across the Commonwealth. And, do, Letter...
What was that?
Letter E, that is for a settlement agreement for a student. And Letter F, also a settlement agreement for a student related to compensatory education.
Thank you, Dr. Senko. I know, like, I had asked for just a quick explanation for B, C, and D. I appreciate it. And I know board member colleagues get the email and the slides and have the attachments, but it's just, it's nice to hear. I appreciate it so much. Before I move to consent, I almost forgot, I just wanted to welcome Ms. Yoda Polly as my, she'll be joining me as co-chairing Education Committee this year, so thank you. I look forward to working with her. I move to approve consent agenda items B through H as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. Questions? Mr. Hickey?
Can we pull Item D, as in David? Do it separately, please?
Certainly. For a roll call?
Yes.
All right. So do we need to amend the initial motion, Mr. Musso?
Yeah, so, yes.
Make it, all right. Can you do that, Ms. Khan?
Sure. I can do that. All right. I move to approve consent agenda items B, C, and D, or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, B, C, and E through H as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Correct. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Are there any further questions or comments or objections?
Do you have a question on C?
Yes, please. C.
Can you clarify that that amount, I believe we were told that that is not going to be, that that is just an estimate? Is that correct? Could you clarify that?
That is correct. That is an estimate at this time.
Okay.
Is it not to exceed?
Do I have a copy of the contract in front of me? Can somebody? I mean, it's...
It's in Board Docs. Let me call it up.
I'm on Board Docs. For some reason, there's no attachment on my... For some reason, there's no attachment on mine.
I'm logging.
Okay.
So how did we come up with that number? And that's where I'm looking at to understand better where that number came from. And if it is a not to exceed, then we're good, right? Because then it doesn't matter.
I mean, this contract is not for any particular dollar amount. It just has rates of 55 an hour for clinical associates, 130 for behavioral consultants, and the same rate for functional behavior. So I'd recommend approving it as a not to exceed. That makes sense. There's no dollar figure in here, there's just rates.
It's quite high, so that's why I want to know, why did we come to that figure? It's quite high.
I'm going to try to go around this gingerly because this involves a student with needs.
Oh, all right. Well, look, I mean, maybe we should break into executive session.
Okay.
You want, do you want to break to executive session to discuss this? You want it?
To me? Well, we need to know if we want to make sure, understand it.
I understand.
To know before we approve this.
I understand.
Because it's quite high.
Yes, yes, yes.
Right?
If we're going to discuss it, we're going to adjourn to executive session. Is that the will of the board? All right. Ms. Khan? Please.
So as I'm, which is fine if we're going to break to executive sessions to discuss, but this is an item that I see as a budgeted item in a special services budget, correct?
The board has to approve the contract, though.
There's a budget for this type of service, not specifically this service, and the board has a contract of this magnitude, the board, well, any contract the board should approve.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to adjourn to executive session for at least 10 minutes or however
Well, we will. Yeah, good question. Thank you for your patience, everyone. While we had a brief executive session, Mr. Musso, would you explain to the public why we went into executive session?
Absolutely, Mr. President. To answer the questions from the board members, we had to discuss the confidential information of an individual student, which we, of course, would not do in public. So that's why we had an executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Musso. So we have a motion on the floor that has been seconded for the consent agenda items. That would be B, C, let me get this right, E, F, G, and H. Okay. Are there any other comments, questions? Are there any objections? Can we record this as unanimous approval? Thank you. And then we need a motion, please, Ms. Khan, for item D.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve item D as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Second.
Comments? Mr. Hickey?
Just as from a historical perspective, I have voted no on the agreement with this particular law firm in the past and will continue to do so based on their previous handling of the COVID situation back in the early 20s.
Okay. Anyone, Mr. Roosevelt, and then Ms.
I think this is an interesting service. It would be appreciated, at least from this board member, if to find out and learn if there are other services that are similar, compare this. I'm also gonna, I have been voting no also for this firm, so I'll continue that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hidalgo.
Thank you. My question, I have a question of our, Mr. Musso, if I could. If, you know, so this is a monthly report of the legal actions, updates and laws and stuff like that. I know that Mr. Musso is part of the PSCA education, right? Some part of the, you're associated. Is there things on this that you wouldn't be pervy to? Or do you see this as a benefit to you, as a cost savings to the school district?
No, I mean, look, this, we've, I mean, I've, we've, I've talked to Dr. Sanco and Dr. Lambert about this to make sure that they understand this is not legal advice for the district. It's just something that Dr. Lambert will have. I, so I think it's good for HR directors to talk to each other and special ed directors to talk to each other. But I, I don't think there's anything I wouldn't be privy to and, and, you know, it's, it's fine if the district wants to approve it.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'll just comment. I hope that all the HR directors talk all the time regardless of paying the fee. So again, I'll probably stick with the no vote too because of some of the things that came back over the pandemic, so it's fine.
Ms. Horner.
Mr. Musso, so the special ed and HR already do talk with the IU. Don't they all talk and all the other counties all get together and they do have a collaboration around?
I agree.
Right? So we should, okay, yeah. So I think, you know, paying for something else that we already have, and if you're on PSBA and we get that communication.
Let me be clear, this is not our proposal. So this is something that Dr. Lambert wanted.
I'm not saying it's your proposal, I'm just asking to clarify. So, yeah, thank you.
Other, other, Ms. Polly.
So my understanding is that Council Rock had this service for many years. And I remember when I first joined this board, there was the first time that this was under question. And the only reason was that the board majority at that point believed that this firm gave advice that they didn't like with regard to people attending school during COVID, something that has nothing to do with special education. So right now, we have the administration asking us for a service that they think is viable to them. And this firm is known for its expertise in special education, so I will vote yes on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. Yes, Ms. Oseki.
Yeah, I, this is $7,500. We just discussed many settlements, as we do every month, in our special ed department that are much more than $7,500. So if this provides information to our special services department that they can utilize to provide better services and help our students in advance of having to go to some of those settlements, then I think it's terrific.
Anyone else? Okay. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please, on this?
Ms. Horner?
No.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Oseki?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Mr. Hickey?
No.
Mr. Roosevelt?
No.
Mr. Hidalgo?
No.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
That's five yes and four no.
Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to a report from the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. Ms. Oseki.
Okay. The IU did not meet in December. They're gonna meet on January 21st. So I don't have a report from the IU this month, but in the meantime, I will recommend that anyone with a child interested in STEAM, check out the Awesome Summer Camps. They've just been released. So they're posted on their website on the, and they're available at the Fab Lab in Warmminster, which if you haven't been there, I know I say this a lot, it's really incredible. They have awesome fabrication tools and amazing robotics programs and some really, really awesome tools that we don't necessarily have in our classroom. And it would be quite an opportunity for any one of our students to attend a summer camp there. So I highly encourage you to check it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oseki, and thank you for your work with the IU. Middle Bucks Institute of Technology, could we have a report, please?
I'll be doing that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey.
Good evening, everyone, and a happy new year to all. We had an executive council meeting on January 7th. We also did not have a meeting in December. So there was a lot of things to cover and discuss. First of all, we held our annual reorganization meeting, much like Council Rock does. Just to note, I will continue to serve as the Executive Council President, and Mr. Fleming Godikson from the Centennial District, he will continue to serve as the Vice President. January, and my apologies to Ms. Nikolenko if I repeated some of the things that she had said, but January was also Board Appreciation Month, and we were fortunate enough to receive a lemon cake made by our culinary students. So most of our new year resolutions were broken later that same night.
It's really good.
The welding lab is now complete, as we've been discussing, and MBIT will be hosting a ribbon cutting ceremony Wednesday, February 12th, beginning at noon. Stakeholders, including local and state officials who were instrumental in supporting this project, will be there. Guests will have the opportunity to tour the lab and witness live demonstrations. And two other items as it relates to the welding lab, one of the welding instructors, Mr. Hamavitz, he received his inspector credentials. And what that does is it allows him to issue certifications to both our students and to the adult students who take classes at evening, as opposed to getting certifications from outside. It can now be done in-house, which will also save some money. The other item of note is MBIT was the recipient of an $85,000 equipment grant, which will go into purchasing the latest robotic welding equipment. So hopefully that will also be used in the future. Other grants that MBIT recently were awarded was a $25,000 youth agricultural grant, which will go into the horticultural program, and a $15,000 industry grant for the plumbing program. One of the reasons I mention these grants is because they help defer the cost of the sending districts, which in turn helps the taxpayers from each of the sending districts as well. MBIT was also fortunate to receive numerous awards over the past two months. It received from the Bucks County Herald, four awards for the best trade school, the best adult learning center, the best cosmetology school, and the best daycare in Little Bucks. Some of the individual awards included were, as Ms. Nikolenko mentioned, Ms. Shari Appleton was one of 12 finalists for the Teacher of the Year Award in the state of Pennsylvania. And I believe that she is the very first career technical center teacher to reach this level of recognition. So congratulations to her. MBIT was also well represented at the ACT conference in San Antonio last month. Three MBIT teachers gave presentations highlighting best practices. And in addition, two MBIT students were nominated and selected to represent Pennsylvania as CTE Presidential Scholars. This is out of a total of five students throughout the state, and MBIT had two of them. MBIT continues to be a presence on the state and national level as it relates to career and technical training for high school students. Congratulations to all these well-deserving individuals. Two final items as note, February is Career and Technical Education Month, and starting January 20th, a Support the Trades t-shirt will be available for purchase online or at the MBIT School Store. Our next executive council meeting is scheduled for January 27th. And unless Ms. Horner has anything to add, that concludes our report. Thank you.
No, I do not. Great job. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Turkey. That's very impressive, and, and we all appreciate your serving as Executive Council President at MBIT. Moving on to Council Rock Education Foundation, I'm very happy to tell you that we have a special guest this evening. Janet, would you step forward? Jen Fansteele has just been elected Board President of the Council Rock Education Foundation, and she was kind enough to come tonight. And do you have a few words for us?
Do, yes. First of all, thank you so much for all of your hard work. I didn't know it was Board Appreciation Month, but I really do appreciate all the work you do and the time you give to our students in Council Rock. And I'm very excited to be here tonight as the new president of the Council Rock Education Foundation. It's an honor to lead such an impactful organization. And just a little bit about me, I have two children. Ben is a junior at Council Rock North, and Claire is a sophomore in college. Both of my children grew up in Council Rock School District, benefiting from an outstanding education supported by passionate teachers, staff, and administrators. My involvement began years ago as a homeroom parent, a PTO leader, and a classroom volunteer. I joined Creff in 2021 to give back to this exceptional community, and it has been such a rewarding experience. Creff's mission is to enhance and elevate innovative education opportunities for all students in the district through community engagement and philanthropic support. One way we do this is through our Innovative Learning Grants Program, which I have been the chair of for almost three years. A few examples of the recent grants that we've awarded that you may remember from the June school board meetings were the Vox Books. These are innovative books that are present at all the elementary schools that combine audio with picture books to help students develop their reading skills. Everyone mentioned Stop the Bleed Tonight, and it is a really awesome program. Another one that I'm really proud of is the Achieve Program, Building Experience Through Work Experience, Ben, I'm sorry, Building Independence Through Work Experience. Creff supported this initiative by funding equipment to create items for the Starborough Cafe and the Garden Market Gift Shop. And finally, the Council Rock SMG Leadership Summit, named for Susan M. Gormley, a former principal at South. This one-day event helps twice a year bring student leaders together to unlock their leadership potential. I'm also thrilled to invite you all to experience the impact of the Creff-funded Side-by-Side Music Mentorship Program. This program pairs Council Rock North concert band students with professional musicians from the Delaware Valley Music Symphony. It will culminate in a collaborative performance on March 16th. I hope you'll join us to see the power of this, and power of this grant in action. And finally, I have to tell you about our next big event, which is the Creff Annual Fundraising Gala, the Monte Carlo Night. It's on February 28th at the North Hampton Country Club. It's a fantastic opportunity to connect with others who are passionate about education, enjoy a really fun night, and raise funds for the impactful programs we support. Thank you for those of you who have already bought and reserved your tickets. Visit our website or look for details in the Rock Report. And again, thank you for being here tonight and for your ongoing support of Creff. Together, we are making lasting differences for the students and families of Council Rock. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fansteele, and thanks for the many hours you put in. Moving on, Policy Committee is next. Ms. Stone?
Yes, hi. I'm happy to be joining Tracy Oseki on the Policy Committee. And unfortunately, we did not have a meeting in December, so I do not have a report for you this evening. So we will be meeting again on Monday, February 10th, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Facilities Committee, Ms. Horner.
Happy New Year. The board and administration, or the faculty committee met on January 2nd. The board and administration were presented with a master plan facilities by, an extensive master plan of the facilities by Schrader and CHA. We believe the board will be presented by Mr. Rapp what budget amount is available for consideration of plan for the facilities. The next facilities meeting will be February 6th. As Dr. Sanco already noted, please note that the facilities committee meeting, that time for this public meeting will be at 5:00 PM for the board to start to work through the details and to discuss further on this plan. And I have one motion, one thing to do. So I move to approve the district-wide landscaping services bid 24-47 in the amount of 148,855, subject to solicitor review and audit.
Second?
A second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, Madam Secretary, would you report that it recorded as unanimous approval? And we'll move on to Finance Committee. Ms. Oseki, please.
Sure. The Finance Committee met on January 9th to discuss the items we will vote on tonight, including but not limited to the purchase of smart panels for the remaining elementary classrooms that do not yet have them, the purchase of replacement AEDs for school and district buildings, and an increase in the rate of pay up to $17.25 per hour for up to five part-time summer help positions that will be posted. These positions work with our maintenance teams to accomplish summer projects. We also agreed not to exceed the Act One Index for the '25-'26 budget year. For more information, please view the meeting on the Council Rock YouTube channel. And with that, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items B through M as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Questions? Mr. Hidalgo.
Yeah, this, this Treasury report includes bills from November and December. As I said in the last meeting, I'd like B pulled for these meetings, so.
Bills from?
From the legal services, you know, a point of contention for a while. So just wanted to pull that and vote, vote no on that separately.
Before I amend it, is there anything else?
Yeah, I just want to comment on the Personnel Action Item Addendum. One of the things that's on there that we discuss is the Knights for Knowledge pay rate. And I just want to thank all these teachers who go above and beyond their normal days of teaching in the classroom every day and bringing their work home to, to be a part of this program. From what I can tell, I believe this is the third year that we've been doing this. This has been a highly successful program. And I know at the time, we had said that we really don't want to be running a night school, you know, hopefully we can do these things during the daytime hours. But from what I can tell from my vantage point, it does seem that this is money that is being well-spent as far as what we're offering students, being able to offer students even more every time we turn around. And I think we're going to find out at Education Committee that it really is paying some dividends here. So I just wanted to, like I said, my thanks to all the people that volunteer to do, I shouldn't say volunteer, but spend the extra time to do this Knights for Knowledge.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Hickey, because I.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think that's a real point of pride for the district. Mr. Roosevelt?
I have a few comments. I want to echo what Mr. Hickey said about Knights for Knowledge. It's truly wonderful to watch this program evolve and include all students as it does now. It was wonderful to see that it, it goes all the way up to 12th grade. This started as an idea that became immensely successful, and I want to thank the administration for including anybody and to see that nobody would be turned away if they show up was, is really wonderful. On the purchase of the Smart Boards, number J, I recently found out between the conclusion of that, that meeting and this meeting, that I believe in Holland Middle, and perhaps, this is for Smart Boards, 167 displays for elementary schools to bring everybody up. But I believe, I'm not sure, it's not confirmed, I'm hoping that somebody can confirm this, that there are some of the older format Smart Boards, perhaps in the two middle schools, that aren't this new style that we're replacing. And it would be wonderful if we could get everybody on the same page. Apparently, some of these may not be working as intended, but the new boards, the math programs have those, and that allow a little bit more interactivity. So I'm not sure if that's the case or not. I approve the idea that, I think we heard extensively, that this version of Smart Boards has been working for a long time. We were commenting about the life hours, and we were concerned how to, how to reach that, and do these need to be replaced? And it seems like the, the ones that sold Finestone, perhaps, had been working for quite some time. So that's great. I think we should just perhaps look to make sure the whole district that needs these boards has them. And I'm not expecting an answer now, I realize that might be something to look into. And the, the other one, item G, Act One Index, this is sort of a public service announcement to the community. This does not mean that this board is accepting the full Act One Index for a tax raise. This just indicates that this board will not exceed the Act One Index for this year in upcoming budget and tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roosevelt. Dr. Sanco, please.
Mr. Roosevelt, if I may, regarding the Smart Boards. So the, what we're asking for tonight, they are for the elementary schools. As I said, at the Education Committee, we have a cyclical plan that we're developing with IT. And if any of the boards are not working in any of our schools, we, we replace them. So to my knowledge, sitting here right now, I do not know of any that are not functioning at Holland or any of the other schools, but what we're talking about in tonight's ask and request is to outfit all the elementary schools. But as we also spoke about, we can't buy, the district cannot afford to buy every single classroom a Smart Touch TV at the same time. So we're trying to spread that out over a five-year, six-cycle.
Thank you. I, I believe there might be some in Holland Middle that don't work. Maybe they can be fixed without replacement. And, and you had some news about AEDs.
As you were all enjoying the treat from the students across the district tonight supporting and celebrating Board Appreciation, Mrs. Mangold was talking with Dr. Black on the phone because we received a pallet of AEDs and we didn't know where Casey wanted them. So it took Tony and Andrea and Ronnie to get Casey on the phone, and you can see them on a pallet right down by the desk when you leave here tonight. So they have arrived. Thank you for your work on that, the three of you.
We have new AEDs, okay. Further comments? So Ms. Oseki, could we get an amended motion for Agenda Items C through M, please?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items C through M as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second, please. Do we have a second?
I said so, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any objections? Hearing none, please, Madam Secretary, record that, it's passing unanimously. Ms. Oseki, could we have a motion, please, for item B?
Sure can. I move to approve item B, the Treasures Report.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Let's have a roll call vote, please, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mr. Hidalgo?
No.
Mr. Roosevelt?
Yes.
Mr. Hickey?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Ms. Oseki?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Horner?
Yes.
That's eight yes and one no.
Wonderful, thank you. We're moving on to, I believe, public comment. This is the second session of public comment, which is open to all items, agenda and non-agenda. Again, this is an opportunity for the members of the public to address the board. We ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience who are watching this broadcast live on CRTV when speaking. It's our goal to maintain a respectful environment. While we welcome your ideas and will consider them in deliberating issue, we typically don't respond to comments or questions. So if you wish to comment, ma'am, please come to the table and turn on the microphone, please. And, very good, thanks. And identify yourself in the municipality where you live. Please.
Good evening. My name is Teri Kylie. I live in Newtown Borough. I've lived here for more than 30 years. All three of my children went through Council Rock School District, and two of my children were lucky to be able to attend school here in this building in kindergarten and first grade. I'm speaking tonight to make a request that the school district immediately make the Capital Improvement Plan 2025, which was presented during the Council Rock Finance Facilities Committee on January 2nd, available to the public. I think it is important that all parents and taxpayers have access to this plan, considering that this report was paid for by taxpayers, and the cost of any capital improvements to any Council Rock building will be eventually paid for by taxpayers, this report should be posted on the Council Rock School District website today. This report outlines the physical needs of each building and rates how essential each is to the needs of students and staff. I am sure that most, if not all, parents of Council Rock students would want to read the report to understand the physical needs of the building that their children attend daily. Some of the physical needs of these buildings are identified by the consultants as essential improvements to protect students and staff in those buildings. We need to see the complete report, especially to view the priority indexing of all the proposed capital improvements for Council Rock buildings. I'm also requesting that before any decision is made regarding the Chancellor Center, that all the alternatives, such as converting Richborough Middle to an admin building, adding an admin section to Council Rock High School North, or building a brand-new administration building, be cost out. Currently, the Capital Improvement Plan estimates that renovating Chancellor would cost the district anywhere from $6 to $7 million and could be completed in two years. When a Council Rock board member asked the consultant, Schrader, if the building is safe, the consultant responded, "The building is not unsafe, but the building needs to be Let us address the needs of this community treasure to prevent further neglect and deterioration. If we do not, we will be forced to spend millions more to build a new building. And please provide transparency to the community by making the Capital Improvement Plan available to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kylie. And now I'm going to turn around and contradict what I said earlier about the board not typically responding. I just want to say, first of all, the master planning process is ongoing, and there is no completed master plan yet. It's a work in progress. And the slides from the meeting that you attended, the recent Facilities Committee meeting, they're on our website in the Facilities Department section. So that's just one example of what we do on a regular basis to be transparent. I mean, all the documents that we share, we do share publicly. And the discussion of the master plan will continue on February 6th at 5:00 PM. In fact, we're starting two hours early because we agree the master plan is a high priority issue, and we'll be having all these discussions in public as we always do. So thanks for your interest, and, you know, we'll do everything we can to keep the community informed. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to, other public comment? Sir?
I'm going to speak here, is it okay?
No, we prefer...
We prefer you use the microphone, thank you.
That microphone won't suffice?
I don't know that it's on. If you would use that one, that'd be fine, thank you.
That's disappointing. I'm heartened to see that you're willing to interact with somebody after they bring something to you, that's beautiful. I'm heartened to see that you deliberate over a settlement agreement or something, whatever. I'm very heartened to see that. My fear is that might have been the first time you ever discussed that matter or ever heard that student's name, and my fear is that my daughter's name would have only been heard at one of those meetings after all's been said and done and you go yea or nay with very little knowledge. That's my fear. So I'm just here, it's, I don't know, how many times am I going to be here? I don't know. I'm here on behalf, in case you don't know, this is my daughter, this is the year she was sexually assaulted by a senior in high school from Council Rock South while she was in eighth grade at Newtown Middle during a summer ESY program, and she was assaulted by somebody who was classified as emotionally disturbed. And the school district saw fit to have Council Rock South and North high school students in the same program, in the same building, in the same room, but they were compartmentalized because they were facing different directions. And saw that that was a great idea. And then my daughter was raped at least four or five times at knife point by this guy. I think you know that already. We did not pursue you with lawyers. We pursued you in all honesty and earnestness because we're contributors to the community. I work on staff at St. Andrew Catholic Church and care about our kids. I run the Family Ministries Program. I work with youth, literally, the parents in these schools. I see them, hundreds of them at a time, at the largest Catholic parish, largest church in your district. It's astonishing. I just spoke to a couple hundred of them on Sunday. Try to love these kids well. We asked for a safe school for our daughter. We did not want a lawsuit, but we were told that we had to sign some agreement to get a safe school for her. There was no safe school for her in the district for high school. She was going into high school when we finally found out about this because he was from Council Rock South, and his friends were from Council Rock North. She was raped in Council Rock North, and she got death threats in Council Rock North. And there are other details that only the police know. Home invasions, assault, that all happened after she met this guy as an eighth gr... she didn't even meet him. He literally picked her up and carried her into a bathroom and locked the door. You're still doing the same program. We watched them. Nia will tell you, "Oh, they all do drugs," while they walk across the street on the way to 7-Eleven. We have watched them this past summer. It's heartbreak, heartbreaking. And with the update is that we met with Mr. Amuso...
Pardon me, I'm sorry. It's, that's three minutes.
I'm going to speak, you could carry me out. We met with Mr. Amuso. Mr. Amuso expressed...
I'm sorry. We're going to...
The district's position was that Nia was not a credible witness.
I have to ask you to conclude.
I'm sorry. You could carry me out. I give you permission if you need to, my stuff's there, but Nia was not a credible witness.
Sir, wait.
No. My daughter was raped if you...
We're going to...
Give me more than three minutes.
I'm sorry, we're going to turn off the microphone.
No, I'm sorry. I'm going to keep speaking, you could carry me out, you could do whatever you want to do. So my daughter was raped repeatedly in your...
Sir?
The district's position is that she is not credible, which means that CHOP is not credible, NOVA is not credible, the therapist we met with...
I'm going to, I'm going to ask you again...
PTSD is not credible, VCAP is not credible, CCAP is not credible, but the guy who went to jail for stabbing another child is credible.
Sir, I will ask you to be removed.
And you have sided, I need you to know that you as a board have sided with that. And Mr. Amuso, I need to tell you this, it's astonishing to me. You are a member of the Jesuit Honor Society. You are a member, you have a personal commitment to Catholic education. You serve on the board at your parish for Catholic education. You have been awarded the St. John Newman Emblem.
Sir?
You're my Catholic brother in Christ.
Sir?
How could you make, I don't understand why you have to do that with my daughter?
Sir, it's my responsibility, it's my responsibility to enforce...
Do you understand, you've spent two years and none of you have even spoken to me like a human being?
Sir, thank you. Appreciate it.
What do I do next as a father? Do I just go home and tell my daughter, "Sorry, the board decided not to listen to you again"?
Sir, we're done.
I mean, I'm a documentary filmmaker, that's what I do. You're, I mean, it's astonishing. You know what would be a great title for a documentary? Here. Willful Blindness, the story of a wealthy school district's willful blindness to the brutal repeated rape of a 13-year-old African-American Catholic girl for whom school choice was made all the difference.
Out of respect for the district policy, I'm going to have to ask you...
All we needed was a chance to pick a school where she wouldn't be assaulted whenever she was being assaulted.
I am asking you to conclude your remarks, please.
You just pushed us aside, like right now.
Thank you, thank you. Is there additional public comment? All right. We'll move on to new business.
Do I have something?
Ms. Horner.
Thank you, Mr. Roosevelt. I would like to make a motion that we collect all the text chats from board directors and both solicitors communicating during the board meetings and allow the entire board to see these conversations. These deliberations that are occurring between select members on this board may be shared with all members of the board so that it all can be informed and in compliance with the Sunshine Act. It is requirement under the PA Supreme Court ruling, Smith and Richmond, that the will of the people be served by their duty, elected board of government oversight directors, to be informed of all matters before or prior to official action. Anything less would be a detriment to the character of this board and its individual members. Can I get a second motion to instruct such board directors and our solicitors to release all the communications of text chats being sent or received by board directors and the solicitors during the board meetings to all the directors on the board?
Before we have a second, I'm advised by legal counsel that we cannot add anything to the agenda that's not on the published agenda. So we won't have a motion on that.
I can add anything.
You cannot.
Why not?
It's called the Sunshine Act. She could add it to a future meeting. Indeed.
I'd like to motion to future meeting.
Okay, I mean, that's, it's unemotional, so it's going to be discussed. Thank you. We will discuss that. Mr. Hidalgo?
Yeah, so you don't have to have an all-fly, on-the-fly vote on emotions right now, but I would say that, you know, in my time on the board, a previous solicitor we had, and I guess I don't know if I can say, because it might have been, it was like onboarding type of advice, but he ever always, he warned each board member, and we all got this warning, anything that you put in texts or in email could and will be assumed that it will be subject to public scrutiny if you're, when you're acting in official capacity of a board. And so I think, I take it a little separately from Ann, when I taught, when I think, when I would call the solicitor and get some information straight up, you know, previous solicitors, I haven't had that with the new firm, but each board member could call the solicitor, but they warned that, you know, whatever we talk about is just similar to our discussions with the superintendent, will be shared with the other board members to keep everybody on an even playing field and keep everybody informed so there's no surprises. And of course, there's nothing perfect, but that's been the policy, that is the policy, and that continues to be the policy. So for me, I was, I asked Mr. Clark when he came on board, who does he work for? Does he work for the five members that voted for him? Because it was kind of weird how he didn't meet with anybody but the five that voted for him before or even after, for a short period of time, whatever. My point is this, is that if there are communications between board members and our legal team, I'm not caring, I'm not going so far to say that we have to share each other's text messages amongst each other, you know, that is something that we can talk about. But I think it's rather reasonable that if there's discussions, phone conversations, or texts, or messages, whatever the venue is, with our solicitor, two board members, that that should be something that each board member understands the advice that they're getting from the council, that we all represent the board, and there's not one, whether you're elected president or vice president, the only really power that it gives you is to run the meeting, right? I'm pretty sure when I got on board, and I won't mention names, but they said basically, you know, they, you can use the presidency because your access to the solicitor, or at least to the superintendent administration and his private meetings, you could use that to your advantage, but in general, people don't do that. We're just trying to run the school, school board, but, or run the school district. But I would say that that's really what a president's supposed to do, is just, you know, organize, set the agenda, run the meetings, and so if there are instances where people on the board are texting or emailing the solicitor, I think that the other board members would be entitled to that, and I think we should come up with some type of acknowledgement that's already there, but maybe make it a little more formal. I'll stop there.
Mr. Roosevelt? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you indicated...
I'm happy to talk on this, but it sounds like we're going to talk about it in the future, so I didn't...
I would rather you talk about it now, and then you can have a vote later.
Anyone else? Excuse me, Mr. Roosevelt. Ms. Hickey?
I believe the point that Ms. Horner may have been making was not necessarily our communications on a daily basis, Joe, or the once-in-awhile that we talk with the solicitor. I believe she was talking about specifically as it relates to the board meetings, at these meetings in general. And I've mentioned this before in committee, and I'll mention it again, I think one of the things that we should do as a board is take these things and leave them there as we discuss our meetings, because when we're looking at our phones, unless it's something very important that you have a personal emergency on, if we're looking at our phones, we're not paying attention to the business at hand of what we're supposed to be doing, is serving this, serving this district. So like I said, my suggestion to solve all this, whenever we have a meeting, whether it's a committee meeting or a public meeting, we should have our phones there and only accessible in the case of emergency, and you'll know who's watching their phones and who's not. I mean, like I said, we should be taking care of the business of the community. So that's a simple, that's an easy solution, and everybody can see it because we all have them. And I'm as guilty as the next person, you know, as far as using my phone or whatever, you know, but that's a simple solution to stop it from ever happening in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Ms. Khan?
I appreciate Mr. Hickey's comments, and although, I'm sure cell phones can be distracting, but speaking for myself, I am a parent of a young child at home. I have a sitter the nights that I have to go to any type of board meeting or anything related to my public service. So my phone, I always, you know, turn it on silent, but when I check my phone, I'm checking to see that my 10-year-old got to bed, or he's texting me for something, and I'm checking he did his homework. So it is my duty as a parent, parent first, and then, you know, serving as the school board director here. So I personally can, you know, support that suggestion, but thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Polly?
So specifically to the text with the solicitor during the board meeting, I mean, speaking for myself, I don't need to text. The person is sitting next to me. And when I was the president, the person was sitting next to me. So I can just try to ask a question if I have a question about the meeting in a procedural way, because it is not the time to make any kind of questions that are lengthy. Maybe do we need to amend something? Do we need a second? How, I mean, and again, the person is sitting next to me. There's no, absolutely no need to text. Now, I will text again for my family, for whatever reason, and that's the reason I have my phone always next to me. So I think I have the right for that.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. Mr. Roosevelt?
Sure. I... I, I think that one of the things that we've seen in our PSBA training is indicative that each of the nine board members receive equal and timely information. Similarly, I'm a father of three, and I do sometimes receive texts for my business or family. Sometimes it occurs during board meetings, but I understand that we're not supposed to be conducting agency business via text, and it would be difficult. I appreciate Mr. Hickey's comment and in, in sort of sharing with that, I don't know where my cellphone is at the moment, maybe it's in my pocket. I, I agree with that, but for public reference, also, it would be difficult to, for the public to understand, are we receiving a text on agency business or is it regarding business or home? So it is an important issue, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss it further at, at an upcoming board meeting, or perhaps wherever this board leadership finds fit. Thank you.
Mr. Doggo.
Yeah, thank you. So just planning ahead to make sure Ann understands how we're going to proceed with a motion. Was this something that we would have a motion set up beforehand, or are you just open to putting it on the agenda and we can make a motion on the fly? Would that be okay, Mr. Amuso?
So, no, just to be clear, you cannot make motions on the fly. So the Sunshine Act requires that the agenda be published 24 hours in advance, and there are three ways that you could add it, but honestly, the Commonwealth Court has been very restrictive. So really, at this point, it's a true emergency situation. So, you know, we developed like the agenda, so, so a motion, all motions, we have to be printed on the agenda and posted 24 hours in advance.
Can any board member just go to the president and say, I'd like this motion on the agenda?
No, I don't think so. I think you have a method of developing the agenda.
Meaning that if somebody wants a motion on the agenda to be voted on, that it can just basically, it's, it's up to the president to say yes or no?
We have a process as you --
I want to know what the process is. Please explain.
I'm about to explain. It's the same process that we have used for many years, which is the president and the vice president meet with the superintendent more than a week in advance of the board meeting. The superintendent has a proposed agenda, and the leadership elected by the board discusses with the superintendent the proposed agenda. And usually, there are, if any, changes, minor. And that proposed agenda then goes to the full board about 48 hours later for the full board's review, and then it is subsequently published publicly. How far in advance do we typically publish it? A Sunday night for a Thursday night meeting?
Usually Tuesday morning at 12:00 AM.
Tuesday morning at 12:00 AM, so Monday night?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So that's, that's the typical process. And if there were a board member who had a motion that they wanted to put on the agenda, yeah, they would contact leadership and say, here's the motion that I'm interested in putting forward. We would discuss that with the administration. Now, the, I don't think the board would ever put, should ever put a motion on the agenda without consulting and discussing it with the administration. And through that collaborative process, then, then we jointly as a board decide what's on the agenda.
Okay. So it's not really jointly, if it's just the administration and the lead of board leadership. I just feel like this doesn't quite make sense to me. I'm sure there's other ways that, that we can do our job, because what ends up happening in a situation like this is if you wanted to, you could just say, we're not going to put this on the agenda, and that, I don't think that's how these boards are supposed to work. I think there's a mechanism somehow for, you know, even someone in the minority, so to speak, if the leadership is definitely just one-sided, as it is on this board for two years, that the minority may not be able to get their motion out there. So something can be added for discussion, and then you can create a, I think, Mr. Amuso, there's got to be a way that people can, can add something to the agenda as a subject that may end up developing a, a motion on the fly. We did it here during COVID, but again, that was probably under emergency, as you said. But as I said, to me, it just, it doesn't sound like this is the, the normal process that there's no way that, I mean, I see that that's how people want to control things, but I'm not sure that that's exactly the way it always has to be.
So again, the Commonwealth, the legislature made substantial changes to the Sunshine Act a few years ago, where they significantly limited the ability to, to add to the agenda. You're right, we used to add things to the agenda all the time at meetings, and in fact, there's a provision in this law that would seem to indicate that you could, you could, you know, add a motion to an agenda by majority vote during a meeting, but the Commonwealth Court struck that down. So the state of the law is it has to be on the printed agenda before you can vote on it.
I appreciate that. I have just two, two other quick comments. One is, yes, indeed, anybody can bring up any subject for discussion that they want. Right now, we're discussing new business and old business. So you're right, Mr. Doggo, we can do that. And Dr. Senko pointed out that I skipped a very elemental process, a step in the process, which is agenda items get worked on in committee meetings. They're brought to committee. Committee discusses agenda items, and for those who've attended committee meetings, we discuss, is this item ready to go on the agenda at next month's meeting? And there have been times when in a committee we've said, no. There's no, there's no agreement on this item, let's work on it some more, and it doesn't go forward on the agenda. So what ends up on an agenda has gone through a committee in almost all instances, education committee, facilities committee, finance committee, policy committee. So that's the process we typically use. If, if, if someone wanted to propose a motion or propose the addition of cellphone bags in every schoolroom, that would go through education committee, and we'd debate it there, and if, if there was agreement, then it would go forward to the full board agenda.
Well, thanks for that, because as I said, if, if, you know, if she has to bring it back up every time a new business, and we can't do a motion, two meetings in a row will just show something, which I doubt you will reject it, so we'll figure it out, whether it's under policy, looking forward. But for looking in the past, there's, there's, there's another, there's got to be another avenue for board members to be able to see what has already happened, you know, and there's got to be a legal process for people to request, board members to request, might be different in the capacity of a board member requesting kind of like a right to know, which I don't know, this might be for Mr. Amuso, what's the avenue for, for board members? Because board members are privy to information that you may be able to deny the public, but you wouldn't be able to deny a fellow board member, and I maybe I'm just --
You're right. Certainly, a board member can file a right to know, but, but you're right, any, any communications with an attorney would be protected from right to know.
What if I'm one of the clients?
No, I get what you're saying. So that's, it's not really a right to know issue for --
Right. So it's interesting. It's a, it's a tough situation, but I'm glad we're having a discussion. Thank you.
All right. Are there other comments? Mr. Roosevelt?
Just quickly, we've been having a discussion in policy committee regarding cell phones for students and administration. I don't know if this element of the discussion finds its way to there as well. Mr. Tate, you've indicated that we, we will discuss this. I don't know where that discussion is. That's to Mr. Hidalgo's point, to Ms. Horner's or to Mr. Amuso regarding, I don't believe Ms., Mrs. Horner may have misspoke regarding trying to make an agenda item for tonight as opposed to with, beyond that 48 hours. So making a motion, having a discussion for new business, to have this on the next monthly meeting would be well in excess of 24, 48, 72 hours. So is, correct?
Just, I mean, I thought Ms. Horner was trying to make a motion and have somebody second and vote on it. I'm saying, you, you can't do that.
Right. And, and I understand that, but she could make a motion, couldn't she, under new business, for a discussion item in an upcoming board meeting a month from now?
There's just no motion. I understand we're having a discussion. It's, it's clear that there's interest and --
And, and I, I agree with Mr. Tate that, that that process generally goes through committee. The only committee that I can think where this exists in would be policy since we're discussing it. So I don't know if that's where this discussion is headed. What did you have in mind when you said, we'll discuss this? I think that's a reasonable option, is to take it to the next policy committee meeting and bring it up as a proposal and, and see what the members of the board feel at that point, and see if it materializes, goes forward. Thank you. Ms. Horner, does that help your motion?
Yeah, it does. I'm, just want to make sure I'm clear that I'm talking about what the previous communications of texts and chats were, that we have privy to those information.
I think that was a healthy discussion, and if there's nothing further --
Mr. Tate?
Mr. Rapp?
Yes. If, if I could just take a second to clarify, not to clarify.
Yeah, please.
Confirm what you said before, that the plan, the information that was presented at the last facilities committee was part of a study that was done, and there, there is a plan that is being formed. There is no plan as of right now, there will not be a plan until, if there, until the board is, has, has voted on a plan, so there is no, and accepted a plan. So there is no plan as of right now, there is no anything else that, you know, and anything that will be discussed regarding that will be at a public meeting.
Good, right. And there also, you spoke of the study done by the consultants. There is no final report yet on that study.
No, there is not.
And what it is --
There are large gaps in, in, in any sort of plan that would, there, there is no completed plan or any real plan to, that's ready to be reported to the board.
And, and when it's finalized and reported to the board, it'll be a public document?
That is, that, there's, we have to, we'll have to talk, we, there, there, it does concern facilities, and it does concern information, so that's, that's a, a decision that the board will have to consider under the Sunshine Law at that point, whether or not it, it falls under security.
Yeah, certain --
Details of the plan.
Certain details might have to be redacted for security reasons, but yeah.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Doggo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rapp, because that was one of the things I wanted to follow up on also was, I mean, you would, you would remember, Mr. Tate, as many years you've been on the board too. I think what the, the constituent was referring to was the capital improvement plan, I mean, capital, let me see what it says actually. Yeah, the capital improvement plan is an annual document that, 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 that Mr., that, that we go over in, in facilities.
Right, and --
And so it's not the, not the five-year plan we're talking about, and in the, you'll remember, I think that we'd say, you can't have it because of the security issues.
No, no.
But that they could come in and review that in person, and I think that was what, so whatever that policy is, that's what I think we should be responding to that constituent with a little more clear than I'm saying it right now, because it's time was 9:30. But basically, that document is available, but you have to come in and see it because to put it out there electronically, there is sensitive information, and so it is available, but you have to come in and chancellor, that's been, I believe, the, the policy.
Yes.
Mr. Hidalgo is correct that we, we do not make that publicly available, like on the website or handout copies, but we do allow someone who would like to view it to come in and view it.
Yes.
And I, I would imagine we would probably do the same thing with this, with the longer-term capital plan.
Makes, makes perfect sense. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Doggo. All right. Are there any other comments? That's new business, old business. Hearing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn? I hear a motion. Thank you. Adjourned.
Nicole? Can we have a look for one minute?